Yes, I'm doing the whole thing. Nobody introduces me, it's okay. There you go, sign on, we'll hit seven o'clock. Is it seven? It's a countdown. Alright, well, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for coming. And the reason why we start at an exact time, just so you know, is because all of this is being televised live on O'Leila TV. Plus, we record it anyway, so thank you for being here tonight. There's so much to share with you. We'll be together for the next two hours, and then after that, a lot of us stick around for at least another half hour, and we'll get into the ground rules. But one of the things we love to do when we start these town halls, and this is our ninth one this year, one of the things we love to do is we start off with a poolay, and we have Auntie Kala Miller here tonight. And I don't know the other two ladies with you, but come on up and we'll introduce you. Okay, come on up.
In the poolay kako, our righteous, eternal heavenly fathers, we are bari his this evening. We're grateful in our hearts for having all these officials here in Awmoku, in Kaula Loa, and in Ha'ula. We're grateful, Father in heaven, for their attendance, and grateful for the people that have made it possible for them to be out here. We ask the Father to be with all of us, that we may ask the questions, and we may listen in our ho'olohe. We ask for thy spirit to be with us, and as we leave to go to our different destinations, may thou protect all of us, to take us home safely to our families. Again, we are grateful for our mayor, and for all those that work with him. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Auntie Kala. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you. Absolutely beautiful, round of applause, thank you. Okay, so, we're gonna make a couple of introductions in the beginning, and I'm gonna start off with, see, councilmember? Come on up here, Matt Wyer, councilman. I've asked Matt to say a few words.
Appreciate it. Aloha, everybody. I'll keep it brief, because I know you're here to, you know, talk story with the mayor of the administration. I wanted to mahalo him first, and the entire team up here, for coming out into the community. They're doing this across the island, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to share, you know, what we want to see. I wanna really, though, thank you for coming out, because this is an opportunity for you to give us guidance, give mayor and his team guidance, and I'm here to listen and assist where I can, and really want everyone to feel comfortable and know that no question should, you know, be off the table. You know, I think mayor's been really great at being thorough and ensuring that the administration follows up, so please feel comfortable coming up and sharing any concern you have in the community, anything you want to see happen, because really, that's why we're here, right? To represent you. So mahalo again for coming out.
Thank you, Matt. We, I know that councilmember Esaki Aina was intending to be here tonight, but I saw her earlier today, and she wasn't feeling well, so her apologies. We have Senator Brenton Awa in the back, and Lisa? Oh, yeah, okay, Senator Brenton, okay, and, okay, if anybody else comes in, I'll be sure to introduce them, okay? That said... I didn't see him. Senator Kurt Favella, I didn't see you, sir. Thank you. Aloha. I didn't see you. Quick question, is Bronson Nzama and Diego Coranza here? Either one of them? I don't think so. What we also do right in the beginning, we usually give them two minutes each. One of the things we were really proud of and decided to do when we first got into office was stand up a youth commission, because we wanted to reach out and have our young people become part of a political process. And usually, every week, we have one or two come and give them as a development opportunity, a couple of minutes in front of the crowd, but neither one of them is here tonight, so let's just talk then about tonight. First of all, my name is, for those who don't know, Rick Blangiari. And I have the privilege of serving as the fifteenth mayor of the city and county of Honolulu. And I will tell you, this job now, nearly three and a half years into it, has proven to be the challenge of a lifetime, and the privilege of a lifetime, and quite honestly, the responsibility of a lifetime. And I've had a lot of responsibility in my life. So, it's moments like this, though, in these town halls, become extremely meaningful for us. And that's the reason why our entire cabinet is here tonight. There's just a couple that are not. We happen to have two key people, deputy managing director and my chief of staff are in Japan tonight in Shibuya. I was supposed to be there for Sister City thing, it's a big deal for them. We sent them, they're not here tonight. But I think everybody else is here, and so I'm very anxious and very proud of you, of them, to have you meet them. We're gonna start right now, down here, sir, and then we'll just go down and get to know who they are, and then I'll come back and I'll tell you a little bit about the ground rules tonight, okay?
Alright, aloha, everybody. My name is Mark Thompson, I'm an assistant chief with HPD.
Aloha, everybody, I'm Major Shalipava, and I'm the commander of District Four.
Aloha, everybody, my name is Kira Shushom. I'm the chief data officer for the city and county of Oahu, and I'm actually here to help everybody on this stage streamline their data. Thank you.
Good evening, Lori Kahikina, executive director and CEO of Heart. We're in charge of constructing the rail system. Thank you.
Aloha, Mike Alco, John Noochi, deputy director, Department of Transportation Services, DTS.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Walter, I'm the deputy director of the Department of Emergency Management. We help coordinate, preparing for, responding to, recovering from, and mitigating against disasters and large-scale emergencies.
Good evening, aloha, my name is Nola Miyazaki, I'm the director of the Department of Human Resources. We have the privilege of managing more than 10,000 civil servants and employees across the city, across the island. And as you probably heard, we're in the, we're hiring, we're open for business, and I've got some of my recruiters outside, Andrew, so if anybody wants to get information, we'd love to share with you why the city and county is one of the best places in the state to work. Thank you.
Aloha, everyone, I'm Kevin O'J, I'm the deputy director of the mayor's office of housing. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Good evening, everyone, Mike Formby, managing director.
Aloha, good evening, my name is Matt Gonzer, I serve as the executive director for the mayor's office of climate change, sustainability, and resiliency.
Aloha, everyone, Mike O'Keefe, I'm the deputy director with the city's Department of Environmental Services. We manage most of the wastewater on Oahu, and that includes 2,100 miles of sewer system, nine treatment plants, and 71 pump stations. We also manage most of the island's solid waste, including most of the curbside collections on the island, and HPower and the landfill.
Aloha, Mike Alco, Ernie Lau, Board of Water Supply.
Hi, my name is Jim Ireland. It's hard to follow this guy. I'm the director of emergency services. We have EMS, your ambulance service, CORE, which is the crisis outreach team addressing our houseless population, and formerly ocean safety, that was part of our department up until just very recently. They are their own department now, but I will be assisting them as they choose a new chief or director and go on their way. So that's very exciting for us, I'm glad to be here tonight.
I'm glad to be here, my name is Stephen Courtney, deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. We provide the computing resources to all these city departments, but also for the public, we provide applications that make it easier for you to live here on the island, such as hnl.info, so when you want to get reports about emergencies, traffic, weather alerts, we also provide 311, when you need to report an issue like a broken street light, illegal dumping, or whatever. But again, I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Erwin Kawata, I'm the deputy manager of the Board of Water Supply. Thank you for having us.
Aloha and good evening, my name is Kalani Howe, fire chief of the Honolulu Fire Department, glad to be here this evening.
Good evening, aloha, my name is Andy Kawano, director of budget and fiscal services. We take care of the property taxes, do accounting, treasury, payroll, and other financial needs for the city. Thank you, look forward to answering your questions.
Aloha, everyone, Warren Momizuka, deputy director, Department of Facility Maintenance, graduated from Ha'ula Elementary, 1983. Castle, 1989, tofu red Raiders, go big red! Nice to be here, big buddy.
That's really hard to follow.
Aloha and good evening, my name is Denise Sari Matzubara, I'm the executive director for the Office of Housing. Thank you so much for having us this evening.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Kat Taschner, I'm the director for the Department of Land Management. We protect, develop, and manage the city's real property interests. I am also the mayor's rep for this neighborhood board, so very nice to see you all in person.
Good evening, Kim Sparland, deputy director of the Office of Economic Revitalization, if you haven't heard of it, not surprised, we're the newest office in the city, and we're really focusing on trying to make Oahu a good place to do business. We have several programs that support small businesses, we have some of our staff outside. If you are interested, or you have a small business, we want to put you in touch with some low-to-no-cost resources in our community. We also have money at the University Hawaii system, that's across the whole state, to help with workforce development, so if you're interested in upscaling, we've got some money for you as well. So, by all means, reach out to us, we'd love to hear how we can help support our economy and your vision. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Brian Gallagher, I'm the deputy director of the city's Department of Design and Construction. We work with the various departments, like DTS, DFM, parks, police, fire, whenever they need, however design and construction needs, they come to our department, and we work together to figure out a solution. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for welcoming us into your community. My name's Laura Thielen, and I'm the director for the city and county Department of Parks and Recreation. We manage the city's over 300 parks, the botanical gardens, the community gardens, the street trees, and also manage a number of programs, including Summer Fund, which will be starting very soon at Ha'ula Community Park.
Aloha, I'm Anton Kruckey, I'm the director of Department of Community Services. We do all the human services activities for the city, so within our department is the public housing, and the home loan programs and such. We also have Work Hawaii, which does job placement, job training. All the HUD money comes through a department within our department that we distribute out to our service providers. Also, we have the elderly affairs division, that's putting out its four-year plan right now, dealing with the elderly population, which is one of the fastest-growing populations in the country in Oahu. And so, also, we have the grants and aids, we manage that program. The mayor has also saw fit to put the childcare coordination and homeless coordination in our department.
Hello, everyone, Jordana Ferr, I'm the childcare resource coordinator that Anton just mentioned, my kulianas, who are littles of littles, they're ohana, and the professionals that care for them. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Aloha, aloha, everyone, this is Sam Moku, and I am the homeless coordinator for the mayor. Aloha.
Good evening, Tracy Kubo, I'm the deputy director for Department of Enterprise Services, and we oversee the Laisa Center, Waikiki Shell, Honolulu Zoo, and the six municipal golf courses, including Kahuku Golf Course. Glad to be here, thank you.
Hi, good evening, deputy director Derek Maishuro, I have the Department of Customer Services, we're the DMV satellite city halls, and we have a public communication division. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for such a warm welcome. So, the reason why they're all here tonight, there's two reasons. One, for you first and foremost, by having the men and women that are here, and their level of expertise and knowledge in their respective fields, you know, you're gonna get direct answers, because it's not all about you asking me questions tonight. We bring this resource here to you, and not only is it tonight, but it can be an ongoing connection for you. When we first started doing these last year, we did 11, this is our ninth this year, I think I said that, that means this is our 20th. And the way we positioned it, when we agreed that we were gonna do this for us, was this would be a journey of learning. And I can tell you that every district is different. People have different feelings, different reactions, different, but there are certain common denominators as well. And so, even though there are people behind me who may not get asked a question tonight, our approach is sort of a holistic approach, because this team works together. And one of the things that I learned early on, being mayor in the city, very seldom is it just one department that handles something. And so, we take a lot of pride in our collaboration, in our teamwork, in getting things done. So, everybody is here to listen intently, spend the next couple of hours with you, and hopefully make this a very meaningful experience for you. And I kind of misspoke in a way when I said, back to give you the ground rules, it's kind of the old coaching me, it's more or less request, okay? What we know is that if you're here tonight, not only do you love this place, but you're passionate about it, and there are probably some issues that have been longstanding, perhaps there's some frustration, anger, whatever, I don't know, we just ask you if you can keep it civil with us, and we promise to keep it civil with you. That said, what we don't do is we don't filter the questions. So, you're free to come up here and ask us anything you want. That said, we are not here to make any speeches, and we're not gonna ask you to make any speeches. So, I don't want to be rude to anybody, I don't. But if you're up here and you're going too long, I may just, I'm gonna cut in and say, what is the question? Because our intent is to answer as many questions as we can for all of you, to make it meaningful. If we get on one topic and we've exhausted that topic, I'm not gonna stay on that topic, we're gonna move on to another topic. I think that's fair to everybody, everybody in this room. So, we've practiced this, and it's worked out really well, and at the end of the night, it always feels good for us to know that we've tried to cover as much as we possibly can, because there is a lot to cover, alright? The other thing I'm gonna suggest, strongly, actually, is don't form a line, because that is distracting to people sitting behind. We have plenty of time to get to everybody, and if for some reason, between now and 9:00 PM, we don't get to you, as I said earlier, at a minimum, we stay around for a half an hour afterwards, and we'll follow up with that, okay? We'll follow up with you. But I'd like you to be able to come up here, and feel free to ask your question, and the only caveat is that you may not like the answer, okay? Just fair play, you can ask us anything, we're gonna tell you the truth, okay, to the best of our ability. Is that fair? Alright, so that said, who wants to go first? Carl. Okay. Okay, Auntie Kala, we're gonna hurry, and I'll go to you, Carl, go ahead, since she's just such a beautiful poolay, thank you.
No, the only reason I wanted to go first, because I have a graduation party to go to.
Okay, well, you have the floor.
Mayor, my question is, like, the last time when you had, when you came to Laia, it's the swimming pool for our athletes at Kahuku High School. We have not heard anything, we only hear the little gossips here and there, or they forgot about us. But just to ask the question, when are we going to have a swimming pool, so that our kids, our athletes can practice at a most convenient place, and that they don't have to come all the way to BYU and beg them to let our children swim or practice? If we had a place called Beauty Hole, like we used to have, then that was different. We didn't have to have somebody letting us the swimming pool at BYU Church College at that time, but...
Alright, so, I get it, a simple question. I can promise you this, I'm gonna let Laura Thielen speak, and I'm happy to speak too, because we have not forgotten you, we have had numerous meetings on the swimming pool, and Laura's here to give you an update tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I feel... Thank you. So, we are working with AES, we've been exchanging an agreement back and forth. What we want to do is work with them to move as fast as possible on the design. We're looking to fit both a swimming pool and a recreation building at the park without displacing the two multipurpose fields or the baseball field. So, we know it's gonna be a little bit like a game of Tetris, and what we want to do is, once we finalize the agreement with AES about, you know, what part of the design they would do, and the permitting, what part of the construction we would do, is come to the community with a map of a park, and then cutouts of, you know, we have 21 pools around the island, so what's the size of the pools and the support buildings for them? What's the size of the rec centers that we have? And then kind of figure out as a group, where can we place that in the park without taking away any of the existing recreational uses? We think we can fit things in, and we think that there's going to be utilities in the locations for it, and we would like to be able to work with AES, so they can begin the design, because they can work a little faster than us, and then we could start working on the contracts for the construction. So, we're feeling like the conversation's going, but as you know, when you get into a project that's this large, you're gonna have to write out the details. And so, we've been exchanging that written details to get it all worked out, and then once we can sign that, we can start moving on the work.
Well, we've appropriated money. You want?
Correct. We have appropriated 1.5 million of city funds to start moving the project forward. And then, the mayor has negotiated additional support from AES above and beyond the commitments that they made to the community some years ago. So, they're gonna make a generous contribution.
And not because he's sitting right to my right, and he got up here tonight, but this guy, Matt Wyer, had everything to do with that, so thank you, Matt. Councilman Matt Wyer. And plus, we have a standing commitment, we actually got AES to come up another million dollars, or five million dollars of their seed money as well. We're gonna make this happen. We're gonna make this happen, okay? You know, I, and, and we want to, we want to make it happen as fast as you want to have it happen, but there is a process, as Laura said. I remember last, we were here about six months ago, and somebody challenged me, and said, you've never built a swimming pool before? And I said, no, but there are a lot of people who know how to do that, and those are the people we're gonna get engaged with, and that's what we're doing right now. So, as Laura said, it's not only the pool, it's the rec center as well. I think we recognize what that means for this community and this side of the island. So, is there anything else? Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so much for being here, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
City council. My question is, where have you looked anywhere else in Kahuku as to where we might build this pool? As you know, that park is not only for our high school, when they do their workouts, football, and things like that, but there's sports, and not just sports throughout the week. They have tournaments there. Now, I don't know where you're gonna put an Olympic-sized swimming pool, and whatever other amenities you're going to have in that location. So, my question is, have you looked?
Yes, go ahead, Laura.
For any place else in Kahuku, because that's not a viable place, considering our kids play there, from throughout the community, Kaula Loa.
Okay, we have your question.
So, we know our district parks across the island are very heavily used, and they can get crowded. We have identified a nearby piece of property and have begun, reached out to the Kahuku Village Association about the possibility of moving them to the adjacent property. It's not sufficient for a pool or a rec center, but that would open up that space to be part of the park and for that development. So, we do not plan on impeding any of the housing that's there, but that's mostly in flood zone area.
I want to emphasize that, because that came up last night, if you don't mind, Laura, would you emphasize that? Because somewhere out there, there was a rumor of sorts, saying that we're gonna knock down houses to do this.
We're not going to knock down any of the houses. The houses are in flood areas, we wouldn't even be able to build there, we do not want to build there, we do not want to take anybody's housing away. We are opening discussions with the Kahuku Village Association, we want to keep them in the community, and we think that it's something that we can find a win-win for everyone needed, and we also know that we need to build out the parking to support this area. You've got parking and unimproved parking in that area, but we can probably make that more efficient as part of the project. So, we are looking at how to be able to fit these things in, in as respectful way as possible, and in as efficient a way as possible, because we know that it's important. And you can go to many of our other district parks where they have been built out with all of these types of amenities. It's not gonna look like a highly-developed area, because the field spaces will be open, and, and so, it'll still be an open environment for people. But, you know, they do get very crowded, because they're, they're loved, but that's because they provide a lot of opportunity for everyone, and this is what we want to do.
We will be having a community discussion about the location of everything. We'll come out with a big map, like I said, we'll have the, the sizes of the different options that are available, people could help figure out what goes where, so that the community can make that decision. We're not going to impose that decision upon you. And then, we will be able to move forward with the design, and then the construction.
We have found one nearby piece of property that would not fit the pool, but it may fit some alternative things to open up some more space.
You know, that presupposes that we own the land in these other places that you're talking about. And right from the get-go, we talked about this being part of the school district in that school area, so I'm ready to move on, okay? We know how important the pool is, I'm not trying to trivialize it. We'll be meeting again, we're putting a lot of planning into this, you'll have it, but in the spirit of this town hall tonight, I want to move it around. And Travis will take your information, so we can come back to you directly. Sir, I'll let you, I promised Carl, and then we'll go to you.
Aloha, everybody, my name's Carl Dex, and this is my ninth town hall, and I've been a resident of Hawaii for 37 years, and I started Clean House Hawaii, and I have a bit of a background in many, many different things, government is one. And my question is, I do appreciate your cabinet and all the members that have come to all of these, why isn't the prosecutor's office here? Why aren't they represented? I understand they're elected separately, and so are city council, but you're the man, you're the boss. Why aren't they here?
Well, I don't think Steve Arm would say that I'm the boss, but, you know, that said, nobody's asked us that before. I will certainly extend an invitation to Steve, as you can see, we're well represented by HPD, certainly not looking to keep Steve out of the Q and A, he's not come up before, and typically, given the activities of the prosecutor's office, it's not necessarily germane to a town hall where a lot of his work, he can't talk, but we can certainly, we can certainly express that. Mike?
Yeah, I'd just say, we haven't disinvited him, so...
We did?
No, I said, we have not disinvited him. So, he's welcome to come, and what I would recommend is that if you have a specific issue, we can take it to him, we can definitely, since you like to come to our town halls, maybe we can get him at the next one.
Okay. Carl, anything else?
My question is an important one, because in these town halls, I've noticed that you struggle, and your staff struggle with enforcement. And currently, I have a vast knowledge of the prosecutor's department using homeless people to dismiss other citations, pass on crimes... And currently, I have a vast knowledge of the prosecutor's department using homeless people to dismiss other citations, pass on crimes and profit. It's, it's really bad. Hundreds of thousands of cases are dismissed under homeless people's names.
All right. Well, that's a big subject and probably not appropriate for a town hall. I appreciate your comments. Sir?
My que, my question is...
I forgot to say, would you please introduce yourselves when you come up, so at least we know your name?
Oh, yeah. My name is Larry.
Hi, Larry.
Hi. My question is, what percent, okay, we're going to fund this swimming pool, right? Hundred percent? Or if connecting with the high school? Is that the project in mind?
Yes.
Funding?
Yes.
Okay.
They don't want to stay on one subject.
No, no.
But I let you do this, Larry, on the pool, but we didn't ask you to pay for the pool. We're between AES and the city, and that's why the planning is so critical, because this will not be an inexpensive endeavor to build this pool.
Yeah. Well, my question is, what's the percentage that the community use the pool? How many percent?
I don't know. We don't have a pool here.
Because years ago, they built a new gym for Kahuku. It was a combined city and state position. Well, people living in Kahuku, we have to go play nine o'clock at night, play basketball, because it's all used up. The women's basketball team, the young men's...
Are they from this area? The people using that gym, are they from here?
Yeah, yeah, but you only have to pay, you know, you go at nine o'clock in the evening to play ball, you know? And what I'm trying to say is, you know, the same thing going to happen, because we senior citizens want to swim in the middle of the morning.
Sure.
Or in the, you know...
Very much so, yes.
And they can't, because they got polo practice, or they got all these other stuff in there, and then, you know...
I, I, I think, Larry, with all due respect, sir, I hear what you're saying. We got other issues to deal with to get, get to that point, but I can promise you, when we get there and we have this pool and the rec center, things will get scheduled accordingly. And if there's a big demand for it, that's great, but we certainly want to stay sensitive to our kapuna and the time of day that they can exercise and those things. That's part of the reason why, but there's also polo teams, there's young people learning swimming for all ages, okay? I just, I can't predict that yet. I think the first task right now is to get something built that has never been built before.
Combining with the state to build it is fine, but the maintenance of the pool and the facility, now, is it still coming straight from the city or 50/50, heavy/happy?
Laura?
I, I think the big difference for the gym and the pool, the gym was built on school property. The pool's going to be built on the city and county park. So, the city will manage it, and we do have DOE come in and use a lot of city fields and facilities. We, we work to support the student athletes, but we also make sure that there's time for the kapuna, time for the keiki, for the swim lessons, the time for the other uses as well. So, I've heard that about the gym, too. The state built it, and supposedly, it was going to be shared, but it was built on school property. The pool will be different. The recreation building will be different. It's going to be on city property. The city will manage it, not the DOE.
Okay. So, only during school hours, they'll be using the pool?
Like I said, we will permit, like, we'll permit baseball fields. Some of the schools will use it, but they don't use it all the time. They, they have to go in and apply for a permit along with other people, and we make sure that these facilities are open to the general public as well. So, the city parks department keeps things open for everybody. It's not the exclusive use of the school.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Ullulani Bernie, and I want to thank Matt Myers for trying to work on a request that I had asked. And this has to do with real property tax, okay? So, something, something that is important to us. I had basically asked him to check on real property tax that, I live in Kahana Valley, I'm on state leased lands, and I still pay just as much real property tax like everybody else, you know, out there in the community. And so, Kulianna lands, Hawaiian homelands, we have 999-year leases here, we have state leases here, and so, I basically asked him if he would look into it and see what kind of help we can get, because we would love to pay all that we have to if we just owned the land, but we're leasing out there, and we're still paying just as much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Kewano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you for the question. Right now, right as of this time, I don't have the information you're talking about, so...
Bill 30.
So, Matt, I will connect with you and share information and get back to... Your name again, sorry?
Ullulani Bernie.
Ullulani? Yeah, we'll get back to you.
Okay. Because some of the stuff we can't answer here, but if you want an answer, that's the reason why we're here.
But now, I know who I am.
Yeah. In fact, in fact, in fact, we'll make sure you have Andy's direct contact, okay? Andy, Andy's responsible for about $4.5 billion a year. He's incredibly astute and very, very good, plus all the taxes and all that. He's the guy you want to talk to. Take nothing away from you, Matt. Don't get me wrong, okay? Sir?
Honorable Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to share with you community issues. My concern is the Turtle Bay Resort implementing today and tomorrow's development plan, and that is my question. In 1987, there were agreements between the original landowner, new owner developer, city and county of Honolulu, communities of Ko'olau'ua and North Shore, binding all parties to maintain open dialogue regarding then-agreed-upon development plan. Exchange ongoing progress and optimizing status of community benefits. By way of internal and external assumption, plans updating city agencies and city administration are moving development forward. Implications include deviating from a single master-owner development dialogue. By way of the above, I believe communities are being mindfully left uninformed. I appeal to Kahuku Community Association, Sub-District 1, Neighborhood Board 28, to actively engage their binding entitlements.
Okay.
On behalf of the community, sample parcel activity claims have been dispatched to District Councilmember Wire on November 16, 28, 29, 2023, requesting confirmation of permitting process. No update.
Okay.
That is my, that is my question.
So, we're going to take that from you tonight. We're going to follow up with you.
Yes, sir.
We'll get your contact information. That's a lot to answer here. As you probably know, it was in the paper today, and Mike and I found out Friday afternoon. We're driving back from Waianae, around the Waianae Coast Comprehension Center, and we got a call from Turtle Bay, from the Blackstone folks, telling us the announcement that they sold the host, which will now be renamed as Aritz Carlton. And I, and we, one of our concerns, we're off the bat on the phone that afternoon, was, okay, what kind of plans or whatever? So, there's a lot at play right now, okay? And we'll try to figure this out. We'll try to answer. I think what I'm hearing you say is you have got no answer to the specifics. We'll do that. But I can't do that.
What I'm trying to say is, in the '87 agreement...
Right.
The pe, the community had a seat at the table. They've ignored it.
Mike, so...
And that's wrong.
Yeah, what I would like to say is, we specifically raised that issue with the attorney and the principal for Blackstone, that the unilateral agreement did give the community a seat at the table, and so, that's a conversation that we need to continue to have with them. But we raised that issue specifically with them.
Thank you. I needed you, I needed to know you knew that, and also, Matt.
Yeah, and we agree with that. That's, it really, that's really why we're doing town halls. We, we agree with that.
This community, from Kahana to Waialua, built that resort, because plantation went out of business.
I remember you from the last one. You have great history, great knowledge and history of this place. I remember.
I have 50 years' experience with the resort, that it didn't develop one community benefit, not one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sunny.
Yes!
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sunny?
Aloha. Thank you so much for coming here today. I just wanted to thank your leadership for really bringing the pool and the rec center to the forefront and prioritizing that, this project. I know many who are not here are in strong support for a rec center and a pool, and there's a dire need, since there's nothing between Kani'ohi and Waialua. So, for the keiki, for the kapuna, for student athletes, this will be amazing. This will be an amazing resource to have. So, we just continue to ask to engage the community as you have in, in the planning process, to make sure that this, you know, comes to a great project that, with the community. So, I just wanted to thank you that. Thank you for that. One other issue that I wanted to bring to your attention is regarding wind turbine setback. So, I personally been advocating to increase the setback to at least a minimum of 1.25 and been personally following this bill or the setback for the past four years. Right now, Bill 64, the land use ordinance is being heard, and in that section, in, within the section, there is language pertaining to large wind turbines and how far it should be set back from the property lines. And so, as an advocate for community, for our Kukuh community, we are really, really fighting to increase the setback. And one of the biggest hurdles and challenges that we're facing right now is the grandfathering language. So, the developers of the wind turbines and hico, they're, they are wanting to insert language about grandfathering existing turbines and within the maintenance and the repairs and such. And so, I wanted to bring this issue to your awareness, because this is impacting the quality of life, our health and the safety of our keiki residents. You know, literally, we are impacted by shadow flicker entering the homes, and there's noise and various issues. And so, we wanted to bring that to your attention and really wanted to, in hopes to garner your support and really not continuing the injustice that our community is facing, especially because first, when we have less than 10 years, and Napo'omakani, they're already up, right? But after their lease expiration, we strongly feel that it shouldn't continue that injustice and onto our community. And so, we just wanted to bring that to your attention here and hope to have further conversations to garner your support.
Let me see, is there anybody here that wants to talk about that? Mike? Because I know what you're talking about, Sunny.
Yeah, Dawn is not here tonight from DPP, but I appreciate you sharing that with us. We'll talk to Dawn about that. And I think you know, the most important thing is that you testify publicly when Esther Kiaina is going through Bill 64.
So, I was present at the hearing last week, and we did testify, and DPP was there. Now, you know, I've been following this for four years, right? And now, we have a new leadership, and so, it'd be great to kind of have a meeting with the grassroots community members, and maybe even do a tour to kind of, you know, show the impacts that our community is facing, because, you know, there's recognition that there needs to be a greater setback. So, at this point, you know, should that, we should, you know, perpetuate indefinitely that that should be imposed onto our community, so...
So, we'll talk to Dawn, and you, make sure you sign up on the list, so we can get in touch with you. Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And tell, and please tell your husband, Wilson. What was, I didn't see him come in. Yeah, you heard the thing about the prosecutor's office, sir.
Please, sir, relax.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. JoJo?
Aloha. My name's JoJo Chang.
Your real name is Laura, but it's JoJo.
My real name, wow, you are good.
I can remember.
That's true. My question is about the proposed bill that will raise property taxes for legal short-term rentals three times the rate that it is currently. I understand that this bill is in your hands. You'll either have to approve it or veto it. What is your plan, Mr. Mayor?
I'm going to let Angie address. We, we've been talking about this, but go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, so, the bill is not in Mayor's hand yet. On June, June 5th, council members will review the bill. They're going to do their third reading, and at that time, there'll be a discussion. There's a resolution that goes with the bill that covers the, the tax rates for the TVUs. They're going to go through that, determine if they're going to pass the resolution. That goes with the bill, and that'll determine the tax rate for TVUs. And then, at that time, if all of that is approved, then it goes to Mayor for review. So, it's, there's still progress going on. I would...
I would just like to say, that's kind of unprecedented to raise someone's taxes by three times for any, any property.
We have to look at every situation on a case-by-case basis, because we have, we actually have of about the 1,800 people that fall in TVUs and, and NOCs, non-conforming uses, right, of, of properties that were grandfathered in. There were about 400 to 500 that actually are paying less taxes now, because they were at the hotel rate, and they got, the hotel rate is $13.90 per thousand in assessed value. The TVU rate is $9, up to $800,000 in assessed value, and 1,150 above that. So, it's be, the, the TVU rate is between the bid and breakfast rate and the hotel rate, closer to the bid and breakfast rate.
That's the proposed TV.
It's, it's as proposed.
$9 is the tripling of what is current, which has been $3, correct?
There were some, there were some taxpayers at $3.50 paying their residential rate, but, you know, that's, that, there will be some increases for some of the owners of TVUs. Some of them will not have much change, and others actually get a reduction.
What about the bill that was proposed by Andrea Topola?
Laura, JoJo, you have to come up to the microphone, because we're on TV.
What about the 6.5% interest, well, instead of from 3 to 6.5% rate that was proposed by Andrea Topola? What about that? Is it still on the table in any way?
So, she proposed her resolution to, to lower that, the $9 rate I was talking about, I think to, I think to 650. She wanted it to be the same as bid and breakfast. The council members all discussed it, and I think five of the council members stated that they would support the proposed rates, and that's how it sort of ended. So, her, her proposal didn't have much of a following.
I would just like to thank Matt Wire, because I think he supported it.
Thank you, JoJo. Okay. Young lady, thank you. Andy, thank you.
O'Shane, Loke'ulani, Ko'olau'ua, no puna'uluma'au. My question is actually also about taxes, and it's a more of a broad request. So, you're Mayor number 15, but Mayor number 13 was Mufi Hannaman, and he, he orchestrated and drafted Kulianna land tax for Hawaiians that are still on their family lands. In Ko'olau'ua, there are a few families that are on the land that they've always been on. And my bold request is, can you extend tax exempt to all Hawaiians? So, people like Auntie Ullulani Bernie, who's done so much work for our people, who is on leased land, just because she will never own it, doesn't mean that she shouldn't reap the benefits that someone like in my family has reaped for 18 years due to Mayor Hannaman. So, you do have the authority to weigh in on taxes. So, my bold request is, can you give a land tax exempt to all Hawaiians, not just those in Kulianna, because you're limiting it to genealogy, and that can be divisive? Mahalo.
Yeah, a very good question, and I, what, what I want to say is that when we, when we assess taxes and when the laws have been, you know, developed over the years, one of the key objectives when we change our main tax law is to be fair, you know, equity. And what we have always supported is that if we give, provide exemptions or, or tax credits in some cases to taxpayers, it has to be where those, those exemptions or tax credits go, goes to people that need it the most, people that are struggling, right, to, to make it day-to-day. So, what I can say is that there are about 30 active bills currently that have to be... So what I can say is that there are about 30 active bills currently that have to be thoroughly reviewed and assessed as to whether they'll be passed to amend ordinance. And we understand that council members are gonna set up a permitted interaction group so they can discuss the bill with administration, you know, and not worry about sunshine laws. And, and then have a public hearing after that to discuss, you know, the outcome of, of the interaction group. So we're, we're gonna work towards that. We're not, we typically don't do things like give a group of people all of the same benefits because you have within that group, people that can afford to pay the taxes and, and we have to pay, it's a team effort. People, there's, people have to pay the taxes if they can afford it and if they are on properties where the taxes are due because we have to provide services. You know, we have to collect the revenues. Real property taxes is the main source of revenue for the city. And we use those revenues to provide services, whether it's, you know, police services, fire services, water safety services, parks and so on. So we have to pay our bills. So, you know, the process has to be such that it's fair. And, and we're working on it.
Yeah, and I hope I didn't give you the impression that I don't understand my authority and taxes or I'm looking to pass the buck. That's not the case at all. As Andy just said, there's some 30 bills being discussed. That in and of itself is its own body of work. So it's sort of like, as JoJo said, if something comes to my desk at that time, then we go through discourse, but I, I, I'm not looking to pass the buck on anything like that. And I understand the commensurate responsibility that goes with those kind of decisions as well. Okay? Thank you. Next up.
Aloha, Mayor.
Aloha.
My name is Henny. I'm the 15th generation. I grew up in Laia Kavai, Laia Malo. I want to talk about something that is affecting all of us. And that is the high cost of living in our state. It is affecting every one of us in every aspect of our lives. And there are people moving away, moving, leaving. They cannot afford to stay here in Hawaii. Maui fires brought into light what we already knew and what they suddenly found out, which is high cost of living. They can't buy any house. They have to work two, three jobs. We think Oahu is expensive, Maui is even worse. And we're leaving in droves. We're short, HPD, we're short, majoring captain, they can tell you. In EMTs, fire, people are leaving. They're leaving for a better life where they don't have to struggle every day just to make a paycheck to paycheck. We sent a bill 2919 where the people finally found something that they didn't have to make a gambling house, didn't have to make an ice house, a drug house, prostitution house, things that are illegal. A piece of their property, a garage, ohana dwelling, a one unit where the homeowner that lives on the property, in fact, I wish Dawn was here, that the owner can host people, that brings people to Hawaii, that spends their tax dollars here in Hawaii. TAT tax over $100 million. Where did that go? Where did that go? Give it to the people in the home, brothers and sisters in Maui. Each one would have had 100 homes. We wanted to do something that we thought would not only advertise how much we love these islands where we grew up and we want to die here as well. We want to live here. My people, Hawaiian people, we're gonna be extinct in our own homeland because we can't afford it. We can't stay here. We have to move. Vegas, 17%, Clark County, increased by 17% all locals from Hawaii. They had to get a Hawaiian language class in their high school because there were so many locals there.
Right. So Henny, I, in this spirit of this, I want to be as respectful as anybody could be, given who you are. Is there a question here?
Yes.
Because what you're talking about, we live with.
Yes.
We're aware of the outmigration.
Yes.
We're doing anything and everything in our consciousness. In fact, just today, I talked to the executive director, I don't know if you saw yesterday, the food bank released a whole bunch of new statistics. And I was on that board for 18 years.
Yes.
I've never seen numbers like now, what the Alice Report is and everything else. We get it and we feel that, right? You said earlier tonight about the responsibility. So what question could we ask you?
The question is, we want to govern our own property. We want that garage that's helping us not work two, three jobs or overtime, spending time away from our kids before they grow up and they have their own family. We want to have our own business.
So what you're saying is if you build an ADU or a vacation rental.
If we close up the garage or use a room.
And you live there.
Yes.
You're living there.
Yes.
As opposed to the preponderance of absentee owners on short-term vacation rentals.
Yeah.
Or for that matter, the incredible number of companies that own 20 or more houses.
Correct.
Especially here on this part of the island.
Live Hawaii, own Hawaii.
Okay, we hear you.
Okay, so that, sorry, sorry, Mayor.
So when we came into office, right, to give you some context, 2019, things were rolling along great. We had 10.6 million visitors in 2019. It brought in over $18 billion in revenue and over $2 billion in sales taxes. And the place was overrun. Local people were subordinated and people who were coming here to pay good money were subordinated. It was not going anywhere. And if COVID had not happened in 2020, it was all set to break 11 million, right? If you talk to the hotel operators in the state, they will tell you that the sweet spot for visitors at a high level of occupancy, 90% plus, 12 months a year, which is ideal for any rental, for any hotel property, is about 8 million visitors, okay?
Is that now?
That's now, too. They're not building new hotel rooms. The latest thing that went on is that Highgate just put 43 rooms in Waikiki. But hard to come by, there's a new bed and breakfast that's about to open, but the merit's gonna run.
We all see.
Okay, so the challenge was, the challenge was, how do we stop the airlines, this was not popular with the airlines, from just flying everybody in, okay? Not caring about where they came from, how much money they spent here, whether even people paid taxes and overrunning this place. And today, with social media and computers, what used to be a hidden beach now has buses pulling up to it.
Social media.
All of that, right? Exactly. So how do we stop that? So we got aggressive with short-term vacation rentals, but no law is absolute nor is it perfect.
So aggressive that we were fined $10,000 in 30 seconds. That means I had to abuse my wife five times in order to match that $10,000 fine.
Did you get fined?
Yes. I got fined for my garage and that's over excessive fines, amendment number eight. And we were trying, not only us, sorry, Hawaii people, trying to make it, trying to do the right thing. We see the criminals that get away with everything, years until a gambling house is or an ice house is raided. But now when we try to make ends meet, we get fined by Dawn. Weaponized DPP.
Well, we're not really trying to do that, but I hear.
That's how it feels like it, Mayor. I'm gonna be honest and straightforward with you and everybody. It feels like DPP is weaponized and it's coming after the middle class and that's us, that's left, that's us that's left. Everybody has working minimum wage, gone. You know why? They can't afford it.
I understand, the math does not work. That's why I brought, the math doesn't work, we get it. Look, we're looking to figure out how we're gonna apply, apply, but I can tell you, just as we had people registered in resorts areas like JoJo was saying, in the resort areas, we expanded that. We've, we're taking a look at very seriously, Henny, people who actually live like you're living, have a rental property, they're staying there. What we wanted to take away, what we wanted to take away, and you should appreciate the purity of this, is that we wanted to take away neighborhoods getting turned into party houses, jacking up prices.
That's why the neighbor, the owner would be on property to address that issue.
I understand that. So that's what I'm trying to tell you, no law is absolute. So it wasn't that we overlooked that. We're now taking that into consideration to see if we can peel back on how we could possibly do that. We have the software now, which we didn't have before, that helps us monitor where people rent or whatever. And I, I actually, personally, I come down on the side of somebody who's living there and they can take care of them, I'm okay with that. It's the absentee owners that have, have ruined this for everybody. And that's a great number, a great, a lot more people.
So those that are absent, I, I agree. Those should, investment houses, more than two, three, five, yeah. It does affect how much it costs to rent. But the owners that live on property that want to make it meet, why not give us the freedom on our own property? Our own garage, our own room.
We get it. I, I, I understand. I promise you, we are working on that. And we'll follow up with you. Give me your contact, so we get your contact information, we'll keep you in the loop on this. We hear you on that.
Yeah.
Look, the outmigration thing for us is painful, just like you're saying. We feel it too.
There's only going to be millionaires left that lives in the state.
Yeah, we get it.
And it's not gonna be Hawaiian people. It's not. We are exodus from our own land. Exodus.
You know, I'm not even gonna say it, I get it.
Okay.
I've been here long enough to know exactly what you're saying. I feel it, I respect it. I'm obviously not Hawaiian, I wasn't born here, but I know exactly what you're saying and understand the need for us to do something, I promise you that.
Dawn and DPP has fined over 1,000 people. We are not a fundraiser.
I don't know if we fined over 1,000 people who were living on their houses renting out, I don't think we have that, I don't think that's the accurate number. But she's not here.
Yeah, I know, I wish she was here.
Well, she's on the mailer, just so, she's been at every other one.
Oh, okay.
I'd ever have you meet with her, but.
Yes, but.
But I don't think 1,000 people living on their properties.
We're attracting people to come here because it's too expensive to live in hotels, $400, $500 a night. No one can afford that. You live in short-term, that's one week for one night in a hotel. So please, Mayor.
Yeah.
And panel.
We hear you.
Help your people.
What we didn't want to do, what we didn't want to do is exactly what you haven't said, but I'll tell you, we didn't want to wholesale Hawaii. Hawaii was being wholesale. 2019 was a wholesale operation at the expense of everybody who lived here in a different way. It wasn't good.
How was that?
Because it was out of control. 11 million visitors is out of control.
And who limits that?
The beaches were crowded, the rest, who what?
Who limits that?
We get to limit that.
Okay, so.
And I hear you, and within that is that adaptation, yes. Okay? That's COVID, actually, if there was a civil line to COVID, it came about as a result of the fact that to our own disbelief, everything shut down, right? Nobody could imagine that. And how we come back from that, one of the things we were determined to do is not wholesale Hawaii. And you as a Hawaiian should appreciate that.
My mom would say prostitute Hawaii.
Okay.
But then, of course, we don't want to prostitute, but it's either do things illegal or do things at my own place where we can make ends meet.
You know, I, I don't have many policies as a person from a leadership standpoint. I've always had this one policy, never create a policy that forces people to lie, okay?
Oh, yeah.
All right?
Oh, oh, yeah.
So, so this is a situation where good people are trying to get by. And I heard every word you said to me, JoJo, people working, teaching, we gotta figure it out. Like I said, no law is perfect, but we are in the right place trying to do the right thing. And I hope that you can embrace that.
I, I hope there's amendments.
We're gonna try, yeah, we're learning. We only, we did that, what, 18 months ago or something like that, a year and a half ago, Bill 41. And, and we've learned a lot and we're more sophisticated now in being able to detail that. So I promise you, Henny, we're gonna come back to you on that.
Okay, yeah. Our state feels like we're always 10 years behind. I think we should move faster. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome. You're welcome, Henny, thank you. Sir.
Mo'aoi, before I start, I think we all should give these folks a hand for coming out here for the community.
Thank you, thank you. Good to see you. Not a lot of guys still calling me coach, but you know, it's okay, it's good. I like that.
I'm not here to ask questions.
Do you want, can you talk into the microphone because we're on TV? So there you go.
I'm not here to ask questions.
I, I, I need, okay. Oh. Let me speak louder. Okay, go ahead.
I'm a resident at Kukuh, Elde, Holy Holly. We've been having problems knowing that this is a city county land that's being leased by several owners there. Where at the present time, we're being managed by a management. And I speak for the majority of the folks that live there, because most of them don't want to be here, but they think they're gonna get evicted and being threatened by those kind of comments that's been coming out in the community. We have structures that are not being properly managed because they're breaking down in many ways. And yet the management that has been dealing with the property hasn't been doing much to coordinate what needs to be done. My name is Ernie Foster. I'm a resident, once again, from the Holy Holly at Kukuh Elde Homes. So we, we would like to find out how we can go about having to deal with these problems at our location.
Okay, Ernie, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm, we, not sure of the actual question, right? I think we need to get your information and have a meeting so we can learn more about this issue. Honestly. Yeah, what you're bringing up, I swear, don't know much about at all. We will, we'll meet, that's the whole purpose why we're here. I said at the outset, the, the relationship now is ongoing. We established contact, we will follow up, we will follow up with you, you'll be surprised. That's why we're doing this. Okay? We will, sir. Thank you, thanks.
And just one more question?
Go ahead.
I'm one of the golfers at the Kukuh Golf Course. And there's many golfers that's not here tonight simply because they're wondering if things are gonna be done correctly at the golf course. Right now, there's only one greenskeeper at the golf course and he's handling nine holes all by himself.
Tracy.
We're wondering what kind of action that should be done to coordinate helping out the golf course management there.
Thank you, Ernie. This is Tracy Kubota, Deputy Director, it's, it's Enterprise Services, go ahead.
So just to reiterate your question, you want to know what can be done to help at our golf course with the management of it or with the maintenance of it? I couldn't hear the one part that you were saying. Can you please repeat?
Tracy, hold the microphone closer.
Sorry. So, oh, one greenskeeper? Well, we, I know we have more than one, but we can work on what it is that your concerns are. Are you feeling that it's not well-maintained?
Yeah, they need more staff.
Staffing, okay, we'll look into that for you. We can talk after also.
Yeah, Ernie, Anton Kruckey's gonna follow up with you right now, get you contact, talk about your first question. Okay? All right, next.
Well, sir.
Aloha, Mai Kako. My name is Ben Schaefer from Kahana. Just a couple of questions. Number one, Laia Convenience Center, when you go in there, a lot of times our trucks are full of rubbish or whatever we have, we've taken over there. We halt, we, we, we take the time to put it all in there, when we get there, it is packed to the max, right? Turn around, gotta come back on, gotta go home, unload everything so that you can use your vehicle. It happens all the time. So I noticed that you folks now have a video cam, but it's facing to the, to the trucks coming in. It really should be facing to the containers to let us know whether it's full or not.
That's a good point, Ben.
It would be ideal, right?
Michael, yeah.
It's not, it's not any kind of technology you see, you just turn the thing in and they can see whether it's full or not.
I am humbled by the wisdom, I, I, okay, I hear you. I, but, but, yeah, Ben, I, yeah. So that's all, that's all, that's all. I wanted to just bring that up. Okay. You don't have to. No.
Yeah, so it's, it's a great question, actually, and something we've heard recently related, related to another convenience center. So we're looking at, we're looking at what we can do. When we installed the cameras at all the convenience centers within the past year, as we, we, we brought the, the final convenience center online, so to speak.
That was great, thank you.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Nothing wrong with it.
The, it was, it was kind of a carefully done thing with the cameras. For, for privacy reasons, we actually can only focus on the, on the, on the cars coming into the center because if you, if you focus on the, you know, people, the activity in Because if you, if you focus on the people, the activity in the center or people unloading their trash, that's kind of, that's been interpreted as, you know, people are unknowingly, we're broadcasting them online, right? But, but the point is not lost. Like, how do we, how do we advertise better or clearer about the bins being full? And we're actually looking into that. We're looking into, one of the suggestions that we have, we're going to explore, is even though it's on the camera, if we can put in view of the camera, say, just hang a banner up temporarily, "Bins full." And that, that means you're, you don't go to that one, you just go to another convenience center, "This is not full," or something like that. But, but your point is a good one and it's something we're looking into.
Wait, I have two more. Sorry about that. The next one is back in, I guess, 1990, you know, whoever was the mayor, Kekele, I can't remember the Hawaiian name. Kekele was part of the Mormon Church's property and the Catholic Church's property. And between those two churches, they always had their campings over there between those two religions, right? And the deal was that the city would come in and take it over. And they would be able to come there at a discounted rate because they are the ones donating the property to the county so that the public can use it as a camping area. I think that has never been honored. I think there was a memorandum of understanding of it, but you might want to check on that. And the third item I wanted to bring up is the windmills. You know, back before it even got started, when the president of the Kuhuku Community Association, Kent Fornumon, had brought it up to our, our attention when we were on Defend Oahu Coalition, we told him to go find out who has the most windmills in the world? Who got the most? How long they've had in? What are their rules? And figure out, go from there. The closest was one mile and a half before any animal, any agriculture, anything where something was living that you needed, it had to be further than that, right? If you look at what they have right now, you know, the American standard is really about corporatist, capitalist, corporatist corruption, right? Because that windmill is so close to the school, so close to the housing. Who on this group would want to live right next to that, right? Or would they like to have one of those windmills right outside of City Hall? Or, or the State Capitol, for instance, right? And so my question is, how did DPP, how did LUC, how did the Department of Health? And all the departments that should have made sure that these things were done correctly? How did they miss so much? And it's still there. By the way, my thing is that they need to be moved. Anything close to the school, anything close to the housing, they need to go far back. And about six months ago, when Hawaiian lecture came to Kuhuku to have their meeting, I, you know, I reminded them that, you know, you folk, they're picking on places where, where families are, where agriculture is. Why don't you guys pick on the other side of the mountain where nobody lives, like in between the valleys? You know, there's a huge valley in between, and that wind is even bigger than the one we have right now. That windmill hardly even moves, right? And so instead of picking on places where eventually there will be housing, they need to find other places. And the CEO told me, wow, that's a great idea. So they need to start looking and moving their stuffs way far away from us. Thank you.
The best thing I can promise you, Ben, is we'll have a conversation with AES about that. That's the best thing. I said earlier tonight at the outset, we answer you as truthfully as we can. I don't know what went on before, not because I wasn't there. I mean, I don't know what we're in that decision-making and how it came to be. I can tell you this, though. I was running Hawaii News Now at the time. And I remember all the stories we did on the ground with all the people hearing that lament, that outrage. And I understand that. I don't know if ever they'll move anything, but I can promise you this. We'll have those discussions and we'll come back to you. We'll tell you what we hear.
Thank you.
Mike, is there anything you want to say to that?
No, that's, that's perfect. We have a lot to learn about what happened in the past. We don't want to do things again if they were wrong. So we'll get it right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. By the way, this man here is Scott Humbert. He's my director of communications. And Ian Schurrings in the back, Ryan Wilson, and Brandy Heger is out here. Our communications team is here. And Scott actually used to be the news director at Hawaii News Now, and he remembers those stories. Okay, who else would like to come up? I'll give you my microphone so you can ask.
Aloha, I'm Sylvia Kapu. I'm from La'ia Malo'o. I'm here to ask questions. I don't expect an answer from you. I would like it to be documented in this meeting. And then if you could come back and answer our questions with Dottie at our Ha'ula Community Association meeting, that would be fine. I just want to bring some points up. After this heavy rain, I noticed that there were smells that were coming from cesspools in our neighborhood. And I know that the government is trying to encourage us to change to septic tank. I'm asking, will you offer a program to help us homeowners to be able to get funding so that we can do this?
So it's a great question. So a couple of approaches. The city has a couple of approaches to cesspools. One of them involves working with the state. But the first one is just a city program. So there's about 8,000 or so cesspools on Oahu. We have a plan to, to deal with about half of them. And that's by way of installing what are called sewer districts in communities that are still relatively dense, meaning there's homes kind of close to other homes, and then those homes are close to existing city sewers. So what the city will do is it will pay and install sewers in that neighborhood. And then they'll, you know, main sewer line down the street and then stub up, stub out to each person's home. That'll take care, like I said, of roughly half the cesspools that are on the island. The other half are in areas where it's not conducive to build sewers. There are homes that are either way far away from existing city sewers, and it just doesn't make sense to like build this huge sewer system to service one or two homes that's far away. It would be just costly and really difficult to build. And, yeah, so for those homes, it's going to be a more creative solution. And that's what we're, and we're going to be there. We're going to help. We're going to come up with a solution for homeowners. We're going to, we're really going to rely on the state for assistance with that, too. The state, as you probably are aware, has a deadline of 2050, I believe it is, to convert, to eliminate all cesspools, basically, and get somebody either connected to the city sewer or have them do a septic tank or some sort of onsite treatment. But bottom line, no cesspools. And so that's a ways away. We don't really want to wait for 2050. We want to do it sooner. So we're actively talking to the state right now about, okay, we nail out these homes with the sewers? What can we do for the homes that can't get sewers to help them pay for onsite systems, which can be, can be expensive?
Okay, thank you. We could probably have that more discussion in our community association meeting. Another question, forgive me, is regarding the land next to the Ha'ula Shopping Center. I have sent emails to Matt Wire about the smell that often emanates from that land because there's a piggery going on and there's no kind of catchment system. So it runs into the soil, and when we have heavy rain, it releases a foul stench. And especially for us at the shopping center or who live close by, it's really bad. And we've called the Department of Health. We've made numerous phone calls and emails, but nothing gets done. So I want that documented in this meeting, if we could have that addressed.
Let me just ask Warren Mamazuka, the rock star from Ha'ula, who is Deputy Director of Facilities Management. Is that something the DFM could possibly help with? I mean, we've never had anybody bring this up before. But I'm just so, we're going to free-form this, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Mayor, that's on private property, so I don't think we can send our stormwater quality guys out there. I'll double-check. I'll talk with our guys tomorrow. But I believe that's ag land, ag property, so, I mean, I'm not real familiar on what they can and cannot do. But.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out.
And we'll give you your contact information, and we'll get back to you on that one, okay?
Okay, thank you.
But you know, that private property thing gets in the way a bunch on a lot of things. It really does. I mean, some of the things we get challenged with in the urban core has to do with private property. And our ability for our police to go in, it's a lot of stuff. Go ahead, one more. Get three. I'm only supposed to get one, and we'll give you three. Go ahead.
We have a problem with homelessness coming into our parks. I live right across Ko'ololea Beach Park. I witness every night, a lot of the homeless go in there and they have issues with drugs and also with alcohol. And I'm a bit concerned because sometimes our ambulance and our fire department and our police are attending to these people. Two weeks ago, there was a gentleman who had an asthma attack who lives across Founders Beach. And he tried to call for an ambulance and they couldn't get through because the ambulance was busy at Ko'ololea Beach Park dealing with one of the homeless people who wouldn't get out of the bathroom. And so this, this man didn't make it because the ambulance was stuck at Ko'ololea Beach Park. Our resources are limited on this side of the island. Our police are limited. When we call in and we report in, sometimes they aren't able to come because they're busy. They're shorthanded. So these are real concerns for us. Because we're out in the country, sometimes, you know, our concerns don't get answered right away. So I just wanted to put this out there that please be mindful of us in the country, that we need the attention that we deserve.
Absolutely, good. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Larry, hang on a second, and we'll have you come up too after. You know, homelessness for us is an island-wide problem. We recently had the point in time come out, whether you believe the number or not, at about 4,500 people, which we're actually fortunate in some ways because that's the exact number that was there right before COVID started. So one of the things that we were able to mitigate during COVID was a lot more homelessness. Even though it's up a couple hundred from last year, we're battling that. It's island-wide. But it's amazing that a population of that size, a couple of thousand of which, half of more, are chronic homeless. They have mental illness, drug addictions, been on the streets for a long time, difficult to deal with. That, that, that number is up. But the fact, the fact that only that many people has become so pervasive island-wide, it's a major problem for us. And we're doing some very unprecedented things with the state now. I'm going to ask Jim to just give you some hope here. But it's, this is a war for us. It's, and I say that in the sense that we're trying to help those people at the same time, help the community. That story that you just relay about somebody dying is terrible. And yet, I know it's very credible. And that's the challenge. So, Jim.
Hi, thank you for that question. You know, two issues here. One is homelessness and the disproportionate use of emergency resources. And we see that more so in downtown, but all over the island, and our remedy for that, but also just ambulances in general. You know, right now, we have 22 ambulances. And when we think about where we want to put a new ambulance, there's two issues. One is the amount of calls and one is geography. So for like downtown, there's a lot of calls. We need more ambulances to for those calls. But on the windward side of Oahu, and to a lesser extent, but also true, the west side of Oahu, it's geography. We have an ambulance, as you all know, in Kahuku. The next one's in Kanioi. So we just had a call that I stopped at on the way here at Crouching Lion, the new restaurant or the rebuilt restaurant there. Kahuku went. Well, Wailea was on another call. So that means Kanioi and not until Waiwah. Those were the two ambulances for this whole area. So I talked to the mayor about this today. And our plan in next year's budget, a year from now, is to propose an ambulance for this side of the island, probably around Waikane or maybe just this side of Waikane. So that way, if Kahuku's out, you don't have to wait for Kanioi, the Waikane ambulance to come. And same if Kanioi is out, the Waikane ambulance can cover more of the Kahaloo side. So I think a year from now, if that, we're able to do that, and that's our plan, we'll have an additional ambulance for this side. That's, that's on the EMS side. As far as the homelessness, our core team, it's been around about two years now, has been pretty successful. Not as successful as I want, but pretty successful down in Chinatown and moving through the Mo'ili'li and Waikiki area. There's still a lot of work to do. But we're addressing homelessness. We're having them respond, the core team, in old city ambulances instead of the ambulance, to not tie up EMS, to not tie up police and fire, to not tie up the ERs. But we know there's also communities affected here, Kahuku, Sunset Beach to a lesser extent, Waiwah to a bigger extent. So our intention is to have the core team get out here and see more of these folks. We know mental illness is a big issue with the homeless. We know drug abuse is. And we're working hand in hand with our community services department, you know, and maybe Anton could add to this.
I'm going to ask Anton and Sam to say a few things. This is an important subject. That was the point I was trying to make. For something that represents less than 1% of our population, it's in everybody's face around the island. And it's a real concern. And it's become, it's, it's a chronic problem nationally, but we want to, I can only speak about what we're dealing with locally and the solutions we're trying to throw against this. Anton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, it's a very difficult situation to address. And the combination of being out in the country and the resources here, you know, I appreciate that challenge. Now, what we're doing is we're reactivating those townhouses that are, that are right below the He'au. And so we're contracting with the state right now. I'm just finalizing the contract. They'll put out to bid for a service provider for a family shelter. And that's just the beginning. Because from the shelter, you know, there's a progression that has to happen out of the shelter. But there's, there's 30 rooms in those townhouses, so that can be a start. But one of the things I'd really like to ask the community is be willing that if we want to solve the problem here in the country, you have to be part of the solution. And one of the things that we can do that's pretty quick, right, is with our churches. And you have a very active church network. And the state right now has these tiny homes, these village homes, that they could place in a church parking lot. So if we took one church and we put two or three there, and the homeless could use the facilities in the church. So churches would not be just helping homeless, they'd be housing homeless, right? Which is what you'd have to do. Because if you don't move somebody to a bed, they're going to be somewhere, right? And we need beds of many kinds. I think Jim talked about mental health and, and different things like that. But if I could call on you, if churches would contact me, we have programs that Sam and I can put together where we can put a small little home on a church lot, and we can work with you on, on more beds, you know, here in the community. Because the more beds we can put here, that's our better shot at, at helping you and addressing this. But the first step was this family shelter. But we need to make sure we have next places to take them so that the family shelter has more room for people to come in. It takes many different kind of beds to help. But if you'll help us, we'll participate with you and try to do the best we can. I'm really sorry about the gentleman that you talked about. That was a tragic situation.
Yeah, before I have Sam say something about our collaboration with the state, Jim, I want to go back to what we're doing and how it can be repaired. Because the whole real conversation, even nationally, I just got back from Washington, DC. We're a conference of 40 mayors I was asked to attend because of the work we're doing here, has shifted to mental illness. Because at the crux of it, that's what we're dealing with in a lot of cases. Whether it's brought in by addiction or whatever, and you have to be able to treat that. And we're hiring a team of doctors, doctors now, where we have a Dr. Shurge on this island to help with us deal with it and be able to maybe even be able to take some people in there. So anything, Jimmy, you want to shed some light on what we're doing? Because that's the other part of it, is how we do this.
You know, yes, doctors, nurses, mental health experts to help the team. Right now, we have emergency medical technicians, community health workers. But one of the other things I forgot to say is when I travel to the different parts of Oahu and meet with people in different encampments, a lot of times, the people that are new to Hawaii are down in Chinatown, Waikiki. But the people in some of the rural communities are born and raised in those communities. Especially, you know, I've visited a lot in Wa'ani, more so. And they don't want to go to a shelter in downtown. So the solution for them, being born and raised in that community, I'm hoping is in that community, whether it's out here or, you know, Wa'ani or what have you. And they have friends and family in the area, so they have support. Just like when people are new to Hawaii, their friends and family are somewhere else. And we want to get them back to their families somewhere else where they'll have that support. And sometimes they're estranged from their families because of their drug abuse or their misbehavior. And so I think really we have a good plan. It's just, you know, the team here and working with, with everyone to find a solution. Because if this was easy, it would have been taken care of already.
Yeah, and, and look, we could talk about this for the rest of the hour. There's a lot we're doing. There's no simple solution. It's a very complicated problem. But I can promise you this. We're putting resources and ingenuity and know-how against homelessness unlike anything else before, okay? And we're actually working very closely with the governor. And quite honestly, since the state controls it, the Department of Health, we need their resources. The city can't do it alone. The fact that we're collaborating, let Sam talk about this. I'm encouraged by what I think we can get done. And, you know, we're not going to get it, we're not going to take care of all of it. Our goal in the beginning is to cut it in half. And we think we can cut it in half. It's a scalable problem.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't want to take anyone's time.
No, but it affects everybody. The subject of homelessness affects people on so many different levels, emotionally. In fact, if I could just talk about one shift, and you just brought it up, Anton brought it up. The churches historically have been great in enabling homelessness, in feeding and clothing or whatever. We're asking to take it to a different place and house homelessness. And not a terrible number on every, on every church, but the governor, this again, we're with the state, has those Kahali made, and Sam could talk about that, we can put those, we just put, we put thirty-six in Kanioli. You know, there are things we can do now and resources, and you'll see it manifest in the next year that have never been done before, that's the best I can tell you. Sam, one more thing, and then we'll, I'll just want you here one more, because we, just as Henny, he left the room, we talk about outmigration. The subject of homelessness is on everybody's mind, it's a big one. And we understand, we understand, we own the fact that we have to do something about it. I don't want this to be, it's not really a police matter, they're not trained to be social workers. There's other ways to deal with this. Sam?
Um, yeah, let me, let, uh, uh, excuse me. My mind is going twenty-five miles an hour right now. Okay, so the point in time count, I was kind of shocked that in our regions, I live in Kanioli, that the point in time count had only identified forty-five homeless in that point in time count. I think in Kanioli alone, I can count forty-five myself. But so, but again, the point in time count is only, you know, a day when they come in and they count whatever they, they can find. The partnership with John Mizuno, who's working at the state and the governor, has been very, very vital for our community. And the reason why is, as Mayor said, it's because of the resources they have. There's a lot of things coming down the pipeline, obviously a lot of it is happening in the Honolulu area, we're looking at the west side, but we are gonna start looking on the windward side, up here in the North Shore area, Kahuku area, to, to have a Kahali out here for our homeless people out here. So, yes, I, I just want to emphasize that we are working together, state and city, which is unprecedented in any of the administration prior, so just want to share that.
Can I just leave this final summary? It, it may affect your various departments. I am a mother, and I have a family, a daughter, a son-in-law, and I have a baby, grandbaby. They all live with me. And I also have two disabled children, and they all live with me. On this side of the island, there is nothing mentioned about a disabled center for adults. We need something like that. And also for childcare, we have no affordable childcare on this side of the island. My children rely on me to watch their grandbaby while they can go to school and while they can work. If I had a full-time job, what options would my children have? So this is the spectrum here that I want to bring to your attention, that our people, we're all struggling, not only financially, physically, with all the challenges that we have, but living on the side of the island, it's intensified because of the limited resources that we have. I'd like to see more dialogue with, you know, our community association. Dottie is doing an excellent job, but I think the housing should be working with us. How can we get our kids into houses? I leave this for food for thought. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Larry, you're back up. Usually your second time and that's it, but go ahead, you were a hit last time. You were a hit last time. Go ahead, Larry.
I have to cover all my, my bases then.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. For the congregation or the audience here, whenever you get federal funding, you have to share it with all the citizens of United States, because we have that senior citizen center, you got a lot of snowbirds. They come here four months and they fly back. Winter months come, they fly back here. So they're snowboarding. And so our senior citizens cannot get in because they're allowed to do that. And that's kind of hard, because, you know, we, we need to kind of climb down on it, but it's a federal funding involved, it's everybody, all the citizens of United States.
Yeah, I think that happens in a lot of places, in the vacation areas where people go. I, I mean, I, I don't know what I can say to that.
You, you go over there and you find cars covered with, you know, cameras over the whole vehicle because salt air, you know, here. But anyway.
What's the question, Larry?
I don't want to talk about that, because I want to talk about our, what do you call, Civil Defense, well, used to be Civil Defense.
The sirens.
In Kahuku, we cannot hear, at least I cannot hear, from Kahuku Heights, I cannot hear the siren.
Okay.
And then every month they announce, you know, eleven forty-five or whatever, you know, I mean, nothing like letting the enemy know when to drop a bomb.
There's Jennifer, there she is. I'll have Jennifer come up here, she's our deputy director in charge of all emergency services.
But I do get one more item too, but.
All right, Larry, let's try to take one question at a time.
All right.
So, thank you for your question. It's really important. I know the sirens have taken on a new importance to everybody since what happened on Maui. I don't want to pass the buck, but the way the sirens are maintained and installed is that the state actually owns the sirens and they maintain them. And when we have the siren test, we help out by practicing to activate them, and then we let the state know, people in the community report in, we get reports about what wasn't heard, and we give those reports to the state so that they can go out and make repairs. And so they are very understaffed in terms of their siren technicians. I think they're down to two people, not just for Oahu, but for the entire state. And there are a number of sirens that are out. And so what we've tried to do in the last year on our website, we've tried to hold the state accountable to giving us information that we know today, what's not working, and what's a minor fix, and what's gonna be a long-term outage. And that's on our website. In real time, if something happens, we mark it unavailable. What we are planning to do and how we're gonna use that, if there's an emergency, because it's not just some sirens aren't working, there are some areas of the island that don't have sirens, or there's a gap, because we know how, how loud the range is supposed to be, that's where we would use a combination of other methods to alert people. So we have volunteers, where they have loudspeakers on their car that can go out and make emergency announcements. The police are able to do that, and some of the other first responders. But I want to reassure everybody, the sirens are one piece of an emergency alert system. The siren really means pay attention, tune in to your local radio, your TV, to get information. The most important component of that system is really what we call, there are two pieces, the emergency alert system and the wireless emergency alert system. And that's something that FEMA and the feds have developed, we can only use it in certain circumstances, meaning something's really life-threatening, we got to let you know right now. And that's when you hear that noise on your TV, and the crawler goes across, or your cellphone makes that horrible noise. So that's what the siren means, is tune on and get that message. And that's something that the counties can activate, that's a national system we have access to, we practice doing that. We have pre-scripted templates for every hazard of what we'll say when we send it out. So even the sirens out, we know where it is, and we've, we're planning around that. And, and so we'll continue to work with the state, and we'll be as transparent as possible on our website about what's not working as soon as we know it. But, thank you, sorry, long explanation.
Jennifer, that's great. Go ahead, Larry.
I like to say that, you know, I was driving down the highway, and I see the height of the battery box. It's about this high. No wonder they get vandalized a lot.
Yes.
I mean, make them a little higher, so they need a ladder.
Yes, and that's what happened. Then they, they went higher and they found they didn't have a bucket truck to repair them. So a lot of challenges, the vandalism is an issue. I know they're working on solutioning it, they've just been challenged with, with lack of people. So we're, we're trying to work with them and, and get everything as, as best we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, my, my, my.
Last, final question, because I want to get some other people. Go ahead. Larry, no, go ahead. You, no, 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 no. Come on, man. All right, we'll go, we'll go, have her go first, and then you can go. Okay, and then you can go, sir, right? You, you, yeah.
I've got a couple of things.
Your name first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jimmy Otasi. And I've been a forty-eight-year resident of, I'm sorry, forty-six years of Ha'ula.
It's a long time. Just try to talk to Mike.
Okay. I'm, a big concern is these ridiculous speed bumps. We have got ten from Hydennix Store.
Speed bumps. I have, I have to tell you, in other places, they're asking us for speed bumps, so that's why we're kind of like.
Well, they can have them, they can take all of ours.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got ten between Hydennix Store and Ha'ula Elementary. There's only two schools, those are the only places that are needed, Cave Elementary and Ha'ula Elementary. The rest can be taken away. And we have got thirteen between the new bridge construction in Ha'ula and Kahuku Medical Center. We have got, we have got two schools, Laie Elementary and Kahuku High School.
Now, I don't want to cut you off, there's two words I hate to say, I really do. It's a state issue, though.
Okay.
And, and, and I promise you, Mike is good friends with Ed Sniffin, the director of Federal State Services. We probably, we'll talk to him about that and say, look, we had a town meeting in Ha'ula, and it's a ridiculous amount of speed bumps out there. There's only two schools, like Cave and Ha'ula. We understand the need to do that, but this has become something that feels like an obstacle course for people simply to drive down the street, right?
It's behind that.
It's not helping. Yes, yeah, that's, that's an issue, it's a health issue, right? Okay, all right, so, okay. So let's go to the next.
So why can't we have them removed?
I don't know, we'll ask. We, I, Mike?
We love them.
No, I, I would just say this, that if, if the Department of Transportation put them in, they probably had complaints and a request and support from the legislators. I would imagine that, but I don't know. But we'll pass it on to Ed Sniffin and ask him why there are so many on this, on this side. Well, that's, I promise, we'll get your contact information. I'll tell you what, I'll talk to Sniffin myself.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll ask Ed, to, to Mike's point, what was the strategy? You know, we're talking really about planning or whatever, what was the strategy out there? Because you've got them everywhere, and I'll bring up your issue too, about if you have back injuries and, and whatever else, because, you know, some.
Our cars are old too.
Yes. No, I, I told you, I get it, the combination of all that, I, I promise you. Okay, we didn't put them in, though. Okay, all right.
Okay, the other thing is that roundabout by Hydennix Store, Kahekele and Kamaiwa, where they come together, why, why wasn't a traffic light just put in there?
Again, state road. So, so, we don't, we don't warrant traffic lights on state roads, but if they get warranted, we would work with DTS to have them put in. But we'll ask Ed about that too.
Yeah.
And I promise you, look, I think we've tried to show you in the last hour and forty-five minutes, we want to own the issues that we can own.
Yeah.
That's why I hate to say this, but we'll, we'll take it up with them, we will, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
We've got people for, we'll get, make sure we get your contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have your notes?
Okay.
Can I have your notes to give to Ed?
Well, I can read things.
Yeah, I can read them, I promise. Thank you. Dear Ed, this was a stupid plan. Yeah, okay. Come on, man.
Good evening. Everyone knows me as Auntie Charlie.
Auntie Charlie.
Just a little background, I think I'm the last kid on this island who was born Schofield Barracks during World War II. So I am of the Aina. My thing is, we have no alternative route in a disaster. This whole coastline is the main way to come in and go out. There used to be an army road up above, Charlie's Road, that you could go up and you'd come out at Halemano. It's all deteriorated. I want to know what is going to happen in a disaster, because the whole coastline is going, our roads are going, you pass Punalu, you hear, you hit all these dips, you know the road is eroding underneath.
We, we drove out here, Mike and I were together, we talked about that, that fires the road, yeah.
Yep, and you see the coastline, they just keep dumping rocks, dumping rocks, dumping rocks. I've been stuck on the other side of Waiahole when the river overruns, and had to go all the way around the island, and then had an accident on that side. There is no alternative route for us. Can we do something? Because in a disaster, we are all going to be stuck.
Yes, it's a big question, Auntie Charlie, and then I don't know if anybody up here is prepared to answer that.
Yeah, Mayor, I don't, I mean, obviously we can't answer that today, but we are working on alternative routes in certain communities, and I think John Nauqui ought to speak a little bit to what we're doing, and this community is one that we need to address it as well. But John, you want to talk about what we're doing with the state?
Yeah. Hi, John Nauqui, DTS. Without having to go into the details of the Maui wildfire, it heightened our awareness of communities that have single point of entry, or maybe even two points of entry on a very long stretch. And we've started to work cross, across the city, within our departments, and not just within the city, but within our state and other partners, to identify the areas that have the most population behind single point entry or just limited entry neighborhoods. And we are trying to figure out, with everybody at the table, these older access roads that used to exist, how do we look at reactivating that? What is the impact? How much could these roads actually handle with minimal infrastructure improvements? And if minimal infrastructure improvements are not sufficient, how we would then look at maybe reaching out to the federal government and looking for other paths and other ways to access and leave the community?
That includes the military as well, I might add.
Right, federal, state.
It also includes the military. We've had a lot of conversations with them too, because of the road systems that they have.
But I just want to assure you that I think this effort that we are going through with all the city departments and federal, state and local linking arms sitting at the same table, it is unprecedented, and it is a very somber exercise that we go through every time to try to figure out, to, I mean, you know, it is, I'm glad you brought this to our attention, and it is another area that we can look at for the benefit of this community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Auntie Charlie. Can I call you Auntie Charlie? No, no simple solution, I, I can promise you. But I think if I could just say one other editorial point, it even goes beyond, and certainly not to trivialize the Maui wildfires, because that was incredible. But we're very aware, you could tell by Jennifer's preparation, we're, and, and I brought Matt Gonzer up here, we tell you, the whole climate change issue, and what we're looking at and what we're dealing with, not just with sea level rise, but potential for other kinds of things, is unprecedented. And so really, there is an incre, I, I said earlier tonight in the opening about the sense of responsibility, I mean, you feel this, so what can we do about that? That's the challenge. Just today I was talking about, I was watching late night YouTube to get caught up on the weather, and over the weekend, just over the weekend, there were thirty-eight tornadoes in ten states in the mainland. I, I never saw things like that before, none of us have, right? So, that's why I said, we really, from the standpoint of city and county, and in conjunction with the state, have a real heightened awareness, sense of urgency, fighting against the clock and praying to God nothing bad happens in the meantime. I promise you that.
And especially since we're limited with our hospital, how small it is, we're limited with ambulance service.
Yes.
It just goes on and on.
Right, no.
So I just started from the top.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Auntie Charlie. Okay.
Hi, thank you all for being here, I really appreciate it. My name is Evelyn Lane, and I live at the Kahuku Senior Housing as well. And one of the things I wanted to bring up about our housing is that we have seniors who are languishing in their units. Sometimes they die there, and they're left there for days on end. We don't have much community resources coming from the management there to kind of keep, you know, so we can age in place like everybody else wants to do. We don't have access to caregivers. Many of us have been trying to get caregivers for more than a year. And we have to, our residents have to go and help the ambulance people when they come, And we have to, our residents have to go and help the ambulance people when they come, explain the conditions of our residents, because nobody's looking out for them. And I've even called the Adult Protective Services to try to get help for some of our residents who don't have family, and I can't get them to come out and do a well check. So, these are some concerns that I have. The other, I'll just want to get through it, and then I'll let you answer. I'm concerned about gentrification of our community in Kahuhu and Ha'ula. If we could try to get some sort of community grant programs to help our residents who can't afford to restore their homes so that they don't have to sell them, or get, you know, so we can keep people in place here. And move houses back from the beach that are being impacted, because, you know, they're falling into the ocean, just like we talked about before. So, those are, and the flooding as we're driving around, because if we have as many people on the island as we did when we had those 11 million tourists, people are going to die out here on the windward side.
That's a question. I agree. Thank you for your question. Can I tell you, you take the status of that?
In the, in the Community Assistance Division and Department of Community Services, we have some renovation loans, home loans that we can do. So, I'll come and give you my card. I'm not familiar with the senior living home that you're talking about, so I'd like some more information about that, and I can look into it for you, okay?
It's a HUD prod, HUD-funded senior housing by the golf course.
Yeah, but is it state HUD-funded?
No, it's owned by the city and county.
Really? Okay. Oh, okay.
The same property that you spoke to the other gentleman about.
All right, I'll come back and we'll review that.
I have anything to follow up with you, come down, now. Don't, don't leave. Okay? All right. We've got about 10 minutes left. Okay. Dottie, I promise this young man over here, the opportunity too, so, have at it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your leadership.
We love having you come out for your town hall. This makes us feel like we're not invisible anymore, right, guys? So, thank you, thank you, thank you. I just have to say something about the homeless issue, and I want to say that Ha'ula Community Center, and thank you very much, city and county of Honolulu, because we have a contract with you. We would not have a community center to provide any services at all if you were not allowing us to use that facility. And it's used very, very well, I must tell you, because we have over 20 nonprofits that serve people there on a daily basis. We have one of the biggest food programs, we have five food programs out of that building. We serve seniors, senior food boxes, we serve homeless people through our pantry, and other people who are needy. We have an Ohano food giveaway, and we have Cal Cal for Kekki. But what I want to tell you about the homeless situation here, I have learned a lot about the homeless issue since we opened that center, and there's no other services for them out here. Now, we do work with Health Harm Reduction Center, but they come out once a week. And we need a lot more services out here for our homeless people. And you're absolutely right, 99.9% of the time, it's mental health problems, our addiction problems. We have no addiction services out here at all. And we have only one mental health service provider in our center, and they're working night and day for people. So, we need lots more services. And again, we are playing, we're musical chairs in our offices and sharing spaces, and the place is busy. But we need these services for our homeless, and I would really like to work with you, Sam. I know that the housing is coming out through the state, it's for families. And I know their data said we had the most families that are not housed out here besides Wai'ani. But I honestly don't see those families. You know, it's, I don't know where they are. I see primarily couples or single people who are homeless, and they're in our services, in our offices, every, every day. I know every name, I know them all. And we just need a lot more help, and we'd appreciate that.
All right, Dottie, I can honestly tell you, I think we would be able to provide some manpower help. This, like I said, we could have spent over an hour just on homeless and our strategy with the state, what the governor's doing at the state level to create jobs, what we're doing, more people clinically trained, not just MDs or psychiatrists, but healthcare workers or whatever, because it's one thing to be able to pick them up in a mobile crisis unit like Jim talked about, or ambulances, or what the police can do, and it's another thing to take them to somewhere, but if you're not dealing with systemically the issue, as you said, it's a very, very high percentage. So, that's what we've been missing, and that's where the partnership with the state really plays into effect, because we don't have the resources to do that, the state does, or the Department of Health, they have the monies and everything else. And so, I think you could expect to see some relief out there. And Jim, we could talk about how we can get some manpower help out there, because I know for a fact, one person doing it with that is not sustainable.
Does she want to work at Harvard?
Yeah, all right, we could have you do that. We've got just a couple of minutes left.
Okay, can I, can I mention a couple of things?
Yeah, this guy here won't want to talk to you.
I know.
You don't let him get his question.
He's got to give me a minute, aren't you?
Okay.
Okay, okay. Another thing, these don't seem like important things, but I know, I called your office, and you all were great, you talked to the state and got them to go out and clean out that stream a little bit, but they only did just a tiny bit. We have eight streams just here in Ha'ula, and this whole Moku has probably 20 streams.
Right.
And, and not all of them, but many of those streams fill up with sand. And in the past, in past administrations, we had city people come out and clean out those streams. They would start cleaning them out before the storms, you know, when the storms were...
Yeah.
Okay, you're my superstar. We really need help with this.
I mean, like, born and raised, what more would you want? This is the guy in charge, right here. Go ahead. One, hey, thank you, Dottie.
You know, the last rain we had earlier this month, our, all of our crews throughout the island was proactive. The week before, they were out clearing the stream mouths, the river mouths, and I thought they did a great job. I know from Waimea all the way to Ka'ilua, our crews were working around the clock, well, not around the clock, but they worked a lot of hours, long hours. So, we did get some flooding in Wa'ahole, Waikane, but I don't think it was as bad, because, you know, knowing that we had that weather coming in, that storm, you know, like I said, we took that proactive approach. And, you know, our department, you know, as far as hiring, year after year, it's been difficult. We hire like 60 people, but we, but we end up negative. But this year, we have hired 108 new employees, and a lot of them are with the roads division. So, we are building up our manpower, we're hoping that we can keep up with the stream mouth opening, and also our stream cleaning. Now, not every stream on this side of the island is maintained by the city, it's actually by the state DOT, you know, but...
But they don't do it at all?
Yeah, so that's something that we need to work with our counterparts.
But I have to give credit where credit's due. You called me, and we responded, I love what you said, right? You know how we responded? I called him.
Okay.
So, you said Ha'ula's pleased, I mean, Warren was the go-to guy.
Okay.
And he got even the state involved, so...
But listen to this, Pokiwa Stream, are you familiar with that Pokiwa Stream?
Very familiar.
Has sand up to the bridge, and almost entirely across there. This, this is a real tragedy waiting to happen, and every time we just get a little water, homes flood in that area. So, is there any way we can get some special attention for that stream?
Yeah, you know, like I said earlier this month, with that rain, we did receive a lot of calls about Pokiwa Stream. In Pokiwa Stream, there's a, there's a drain outlet.
We know.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what the city maintains. But we did contact Ed Sniffin, he did send a crew out to, to...
Doesn't do much.
Okay, well, well, we got to depend on everyone's word, right?
You know, there's a...
I mean, yeah, so...
A 96-year-old man was out there digging in the stream. Now, that shouldn't be, and he, his house would be flooded if he did dig in the stream. So, when the state came out, they maybe, the stream was this wide, and then they made it maybe another foot wider, that's it. And, and that stream is a real tragedy waiting to happen. So, please, see if we can work something out with the state. I know it's not just the city.
No, we'll try to do that. I mean, I promise you, Dottie. Sir, I apologize, we're going to, we're going to go off the air, but we'll answer your questions, okay? All right, so, you can come up and ask a, Dottie? I want to let him come up and ask a question, we're going to be here. You, you know we're here for you, so, I promise you. We're not, we're not running out of the building.
So, okay, hi, my name is Nicole. My question is, can we get more police officers out here? Since we do live in the country, what the previous speaker said.
So, so the question is, can we have more police officers here? This is great, yeah. You know, we need more police officers in general, we're recruiting.
Yes, of course.
In fact, Chief Logan told me just yesterday, you know, we put in an incentive bonus, $25,000 signing, you know, for over three years, and this is the first class of, I was just telling the officers earlier tonight, coming in, there's more than 30 classes. We were down at one point to single-digit classes. So, we're trying to build up a deficit of police officers. You heard Warren just said, we deal with attrition, or whatever.
Yes.
We were down 440 at one point, I think we're down around 400 right now, we're working on that. Is there anything that you want to add?
Um, actually...
We went off the air, right? I take it we're off the air? Not yet, okay, go ahead.
Um, actually, I'm new to the district, I just got here three weeks ago. However, two lieutenants and the officers from this sector have already come to me and asked me if they could at least have one more beat officer on each watch. And as I'm looking at the personnel strength that I have across the board from Wa'manalo to Kahuhu, and I have to manage where it goes, the night shift is a little short sometimes, and so, there are certain events that happen that we ask them to add more bodies out here. So, when we know that there's going to be, for example, graduations, or the big events at Turtle Bay, we'll add more, and we also...
Does it have to be in an event? Can it just be in general?
In general is where...
Because say if, how many officers do you guys normally have on shift?
On shift, we have minimum 17, from Wa'manalo to Kahuhu.
What about just from Ka'ava to Kahuhu?
Uh, three to four.
Three to four?
Yes.
So, if something happens in between?
Correct, and that's...
We're short, right?
Yes.
We have five districts though? Ka'ava, Punalu, Ha'ula?
So, for us, it's sectors. And so, your sector, which is Sector 4, has three to four officers that are assigned each shift. Kaneohe, which is a little bit more calls for service, is usually between five to six. Ka'ilua, Wa'manalo is almost the same as you folks, three to four. And I think the overall, the overall problem is the amount of officers in the entire department.
Yeah, I understand you guys are...
Yeah, so, as we get more, and they come to our district, and then we can, we fill the positions here, it's perfect, but we have a great support staff that we have that are not patrol officers, that at times we call upon them, like our community policing team who's here tonight, they'll take beats if need be, we have our crime reduction unit officers, so, there are other options that I'm, as the commander, am still looking at doing, but it's awesome to know that your patrol officers have already asked me, so they're totally in tune to what you need out here, and yeah.
And the last thing I'm going to say, because I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and then we'll talk with you, sir, is that public safety, for all the things we talked about tonight, or all the other things we could possibly talk about, number one, overarching priority. And it's been a challenge having shortage of police officers we have, because everybody knows that they're the tip of the spear, they're there to protect and serve, and if something happens, that's who you want to be able to call, you want to believe that they're accessible, you want to believe that when you call 911, somebody will respond.